All set. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Women's Zoning Board of Appeals. It's the first in-person meeting in fifteen months, and we're all happy to see each other without masks and to see all of you. Ms. Roberts, please call the roll.
Falcoff.
Here.
Mr. Glattard.
Here.
Ms. Norg.
Here.
Mr. Pelletan.
Here.
Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. I think, I was told that this will not be shown on Channel Six, but it will be recorded, and you can access it on YouTube, on YouTube channel.
It'll be uploaded to YouTube probably tomorrow.
Thus far, it's fascinating video of the shelf.
Yes.
Okay. For those new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on July twenty-seventh. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendation. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. Also, this board does not operate by a majority vote. We need at least four members voting in the affirmative to approve an application. All members are here tonight, so four of the seven would be sufficient. There's no penalty, so I don't see any reason for anyone wanting to ask for a continuance, but if anybody wants to ask for a continuance, we're happy to consider it. And if you do want to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive comments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with a particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all our presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I will ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in a testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do." Thank you. Ms. Roberts, I think we're ready for the first case.
Our first case is 2021 Z-25, 4085 Bunker Lane. This is a request for a 267.24 square foot total floor area variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition. This case was tabled from a previous meeting.
Welcome, Sakashikir. See you again. Good to see you in real life.
Thank you for allowing us to come back also. We took your comments very seriously. After the last time we made a presentation, we met with our architect, who ultimately called Ms. Roberts to make sure that we were on board with what we had suggested, and hopefully that's what we have presented today. One of the things that was requested was the existing floor plan, this floor plan, which
Yeah, 1.9.
And then you do see that the requested single-story den that will ultimately become a bedroom is also included in the drawing. We were asked about respect to things like the sun pump, which is on there, and also were asked about air conditioners. The one towards the front of the house is existing, the other two are being relocated from the back of the house. One of the other comments was, there seem to be an awful lot of windows to work in additional for the bedroom, and of course...
And we agreed to that, and yes.
He went a little crazy.
And I think in our haste to get the application in, we just kind of, you know, let him do the rendering and some of that, it didn't, you know, reflect. Oh. Maybe it was too short. It didn't reflect the intent. So hopefully this shows exactly what it's going to be.
Hello.
So I just tried to reconcile 1.8, the proposed north elevation, and 1.8.
That's the previous elevation. The new ones are on 1.10 and 1.11.
I got, I just want to make sure of that. So 1.9 shows the openings in the proposed addition. One is the, to the, to the, the south elevation shows the sliding doors, and then the west elevation shows the two windows. Is that, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions. Starting off with, one of the reasons you were seeking the variance was because the neighbors across the street could look into your family room. I'm trying to understand, you already have a family room which is in the back of the house, so what you're adding is a second family room essentially?
No, it's going to be, basically, it's ultimately going to be a den, because I have bad knees. It's going to be a bedroom, I'm sorry, thank you. It's going to ultimately be a bedroom. It's not going to be an all-the-time bedroom, but a lot of the time, because my knees are real bad.
So, let's start within the room itself. There's a closet drawn in. Is a closet that's drawn in to be built, or is that what you're intending to add later?
No, that will be built.
All right. And there's no full bath on the first floor, is there? So even if it were the new bedroom, you would still be walking upstairs to use a shower or a bath?
My biggest issue is coming home from work. I can just barely walk, so getting up the stairs at night is extremely difficult. I can manage to get up the stairs after I've had appointments.
And what dictates the size of the room that, as a result of the size you now have to ask for a variance? Is there a reason why the room has to be this size?
Well, you know, I guess partly because when we kind of laid it out and met with the architect, and especially now that we're adding closets and everything, we just felt that, you know, it was, it was going to be necessary to be somewhat close to what we were looking for.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, or questions for the applicant? I have, I'm looking at the standards for variation. Particularly the thing that always, we always tend to have to deal with, which is the hardship issue. The difficulty or hardship is peculiar to the property in question and is not generally shared by other properties classified in the same zoning district. That's, let's see. And D, the difficulty or hardship resulting from the application of this ordinance will prevent the owner from making a reasonable use of the property. However, the fact that the property could be utilized more profitably with the village than without the variation is not considered grounds for granting a variation. Now, the others clearly don't apply, but I'm always struggling a little bit. I hear the hardship issue. I understand your concern in terms of your health issues, that you need to have a bedroom on the first floor. I'm struggling how all that meets those two hardship issues, but I will defer to other people on the board.
Well, I'm going to jump in on that aspect of it. I mean, I think sixteen by eighteen is a generous room, but if you put a king-size bed in it, it'll eat up that space pretty quickly. While adding additional space to the house somewhere other than on the ground floor would help them with the, you know, in terms of coverage, because there was some concern as well about impervious surface, adding impervious surface. I think that really comes down to whether or not we feel that adding a bedroom on the first floor is justified, you know, by their circumstances. It's less, in my mind, about the lot itself and less about, you know, what they're going to, or more about what they're going to do with it.
If I could just add to that, I was pleased to see the new drawings in this month's packet, but absolutely no change was made to the letter, or if it was, I missed it. And the original letter really focuses on the construction across the street, the need for greater privacy. And I think last time we met, we encouraged you to revamp this in terms of something like a bedroom, a first-floor bedroom, that would be truly needed. So I'm a little bit stuck on that, and I'm also stuck on the point that Brad raised, which is that there's no full bath on the first floor. And as you age, if stairs are difficult now, they're going to be that much harder with every passing year. And those two things make me think that there's not a hardship here, to be perfectly honest. Please.
Please.
We would have risen, but we did not think that that was something that we wanted to do and was there requested. I mean, had we expected that, we certainly would have, you know, addressed it differently, and we apologize. I mean, we thought it was mostly, you know, we looked at the different things, the plan, the air conditioning, the sun pump, all those different things, the closet, we made sure all those things were in there, and we apologize.
Yeah.
Just so you understand, our role is to interpret the codes.
Sure.
And we'll vote according to that. That's our role. We support the Village Board. It goes to the Village Board after, and whatever decision is made here can be overturned for the most part.
Any other?
I think, well, they need a supermajority, I guess, in some cases.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone? Thank you very much. Appreciate your, and I will ask for anyone else that wishes to comment on this case.
I have one more question, and that is, did you look at your first floor and think about whether a bath, a full bathroom could be put on the first floor?
We probably could add a shower to where we have, you know, the existing bathroom, but I don't think we would need that right, you know, right now.
Yeah, in my mind, you know, when I was thinking about it, I said, well, if you take out the wall to the existing powder room and you change the door into the family room, you could put in a shower stall in that corner.
Right.
Okay, thank you, and hearing no one else wishes to comment on this case, thank you very much. I will close testimony. You can sit down. And can we have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting or request for a 267.24 square foot or 2.14% total floor area variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition at 4085 Bunker Lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman.
I have the same concerns that Maria had, that if we go according to what we're supposed to do is, you know, we're all volunteers, we're supposed to evaluate it based on the codes. I don't believe there's a hardship. I understand the health issues, but I don't know if there's a hardship. I'm still on the fence with this, and I'd like to see what Maya Soishad say.
So I think that the hardships that we usually consider are, you know, the shape of the lot, or some aspects, some physical aspect of the property or the building. In this case, as I said before, I think it really turns on whether or not you believe the Geischers and their particular health issues. But I listened to what Maria said, and I, you know, if it's bad now, it's going to get worse, and I don't think that I need to wait until he's using a walker or a wheelchair or something like that to justify a 2% increase in the floor area. I just, I don't see, well, I was concerned when there were windows, and it was obviously not really bedroom-esque. That has changed in terms of the plan, and while the person looking at the house into the family room doesn't, is not logical, I don't know that that is really a feature of what it is that they're saying now, and so I think if you take them at face value and if they need a bedroom on the first floor, then, and we aren't, don't grant this, then they'd have to probably take the existing family room and do something and convert that. So I'm sympathetic to it, and I can see how it would work. The suggestion I made about the existing powder room, which is the most logical since the other plumbing is there, would work. It's not terribly proximate to the bedroom, but unless we grant them additional space in their, you know, additional floor area variation, they can't really add a bathroom in the, in the new addition. So I tend to say, okay, you did what we asked, and it is no longer a sunroom, and you've answered the other questions we had, and I can support it.
I would get and come almost to the opposite conclusion using some of that same analysis. I agree with Maria. I'm not convinced that there's a demonstrated hardship. This is a bedroom in name only, I think. I think this is, in fact, a second family room. It now has a closet, so I guess realtors call it now a bedroom, but it's nowhere near a usable bathroom. And if this truly had been a hardship with a need for a first-floor bedroom, I think we would have seen the plans for the powder room to be converted into a full bath or some other accommodation made. As you point out, Riiri, it is interesting, it's quite a distance between the existing powder room and the bedroom. It requires you to go through a mudroom, through the existing breakfast area, then either through the other family room or through the kitchen. So I will defer to the architects on the board here, but I would assume that would not be designed with all of those pathways to get to the bathroom. So in the end, I'm convinced the opposite, that there hasn't been a demonstrable hardship shown.
And I would agree with what Riiri said as far as the ground four bedroom, the future use of the bathroom. As an architect, I can see that it's a logical place to put it there. Yes, it's a distance away, but, you know, you're dealing with existing conditions. I would go, I would add to this that just from a disturbance to the neighbors, there's a forest to the back, a golf course to the other side, a big hedge towards the neighbor, and that wall is a brick wall in their new design. So I think they've really gone forward to address her comments at the last meeting, and I will support.
Yeah, I too think I can support this as well. I mean, I don't want to second-guess a homeowner saying, you know, whether they need, if they say they need a bedroom for the first floor, I have to believe them that they do, you know, if not immediately, in the near future. And I do agree that it's a, you know, it's a private lot, that, you know, it doesn't disturb others, it's next to the golf course, and I, yeah, I can support the proposal.
Thank you. I think Maria has a comment still.
Hey.
Sorry.
Thank you. I will be supporting this, I think reluctantly, because I'm not sure that the hardship has been demonstrated. But I do applaud you for planning ahead. It's nice to be able to age in place. You've been here a long time, and we like to keep our residents as long as we can. We had a similar case last year where residents wanted to put in an elevator, also because of disabilities that were appearing every year as they got older and older. And I think because you are thinking ahead for that eventuality, I can support this.
Thank you. The existing building, the total floor area is almost the maximum permitted. The applicant comes and says, and asks for an addition that will exceed 100%, the excess will be 100% of what is proposed. And to do that, there has to be a convincing argument that there's a hardship. And as I've read Paragraph C and D, I'm just not convinced that that hardship exists. Health reasons, there are many accommodations that can be made to accommodate the particular health, current and future health circumstances. And we are asked, the board, to recommend to the Board of Trustees whether the conditions for variations have been met. And although I am very sympathetic that this would be nice to have, I am, can't be persuaded that it meets the conditions for a variation. The fact that it is only 2%, we many times approve things that are, have a very small percentage increase, but in this case, that increase is not incremental, it is the whole, it covers the whole addition. So I reluctantly, I don't think I can approve it. So no other comments, we can go to a vote.
Mr. Sherman.
No.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff.
No.
Mr. Glattard.
Yes.
Ms. Norg.
Yes.
Ms. Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
No. So this goes with a four affirmative approval to the Board of Trustees, which will meet on July twenty-seventh. Thank you very much.
If I could have you pop up and sign something for me, please. I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2021-Z-25.
I'll second that.
Lisa, we need to go take a vote on the...
Oh, it's a, we can do a voice vote, all aye.
No.
Or nay.
Oh, we can do a voice vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We just had to do that when we were, yes, now that we're in person, we can just do the voice vote.
Please, let's go to the next case, please.
Our next case is 2021 Z-26, 200 Catopa Place. This is a request for a 78.48 square foot lot coverage variation, a 232.39 square foot total floor area variation, and a 46.25 square foot rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a two-car detached garage.
Thank you. Are you... Welcome, good evening. Please proceed. Very good, thank you.
So my understanding, my hope is that we have a plenty of room, so just asking for the increase to 20 by 22, so that we can comfortably fit in two cars, we should have having just them just fit in, my understanding would imply that it's going to stop on lower dimensions and, you know, there's...
I think your existing garage is of historic significance.
Tree that fell on it. We tried to do this last year, and they added the French, the rating system to requirements, and so we couldn't get that done in time, so now, yes, that needs to go. So I'll take really whatever, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the slightly bigger 20 by 22.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a quick question for Lisa. When they're looking for 232 square feet, does that, is the existing garage, is that counted as torn down, and the new garage is this amount? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, this is...
This is net?
Net, if you, I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't look at the old one, we're just looking at the new numbers.
Okay.
Oh, so what you're saying is that they're not asking for two hundred and thirty two additional square feet? They're assuming that there was no garage there at all, and now it's two hundred thirty two square feet for a new two, two car garage?
I think she's saying the, the net number by adding this is two thirty two.
Alright.
Right, right, sorry, maybe net is not the wrong word.
Oh, is that wrong?
No, no, so, um, the, right, those are the, those are the calculations disregarding the existing condition altogether. So we're not taking the old minus the new and calling out that, we're just saying, clean slate, this is what the number is, is it?
So it's as if there was no garage there at all?
Right, right.
So even if they were gonna ask for a one car garage, they'd be coming before the zoning board? Probably?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So it seems like they're almost at their max. And now they have to add the additional spot, which is about two hundred square feet.
Yeah, cause if the, the additional percentage is two hundred thirty two square feet, and the total garage area is four forty, then they would only be able to put a two hundred square foot garage.
Which is a hundred by ten.
Which is roughly a single car, maybe a little tiny, but.
Yeah. For future reference now, what is a, a garage, as I'm understanding, is about twenty feet long for the average car?
Deep, yeah.
That's a typical garage, twenty feet, and then for a one car garage versus a two car, what's the usual width?
I'd say twenty to twenty two for a two car.
Yeah.
You know, twelve, I think, is average for a one car.
Well, I think we'll, uh, we'll met in cur, we are encouraged to support every house to be able to have two spots.
That I understand.
Okay. Two garage spots.
So, so if this was instead of twenty by twenty, rather than twenty by twenty two, what does that reduce the?
By forty square feet?
Forty square feet, yeah.
Okay, it's not.
Wouldn't quite make it.
No.
Okay.
You might, was.
So, well, I'm just gonna, um, I had done some notes, uh, that I'm now looking at. Um, so because the garage, as far as the floor area goes, um, the garage was under the, the maximum, um, bonus before, and now it is still at the bonus level. So the amount that the property, um, the amount of nonconformity is not changing, right? Cause the, the bonus is moving as the total is moving. So, um, um, they're nonconforming by about two hundred and twenty one square feet between existing and new. Um, the difference is that, um, the bonus, um, the variation amount is from what's allowed is two thirty two.
So the two thirty two is beyond what they're allowed to have for their property?
Right, right.
Okay.
But the sort of the amount that's nonconforming is staying the same, cause the whole thing is sliding, adding to the bonus, adding to what's allowed, and then.
I thought I had it. But I'm glad you're here to explain.
And any questions, any other questions for the applicant? Harry Nunn, thank you very much. Uh, does anybody want to opine on this application in the audience, seeing none?
I can make a motion. I'm going to recommend granting a request for seventy eight point four eight square foot or one point four percent lot coverage variation, a two hundred and thirty two point three nine square foot or four point one six percent total floor area variation, and a forty six point two five square foot or four point one one percent rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a two car detached garage at two hundred Catalpa Place in accordance with the plans submitted.
I second.
Um, so my thoughts on this are really, eh, if we're supporting two car garages, I, I don't see much of an argument against this, unless the neighbors or somebody else, um, had an issue with the placement of it. Um, but the existing garage is in the, the same place where this one will be. Um, so I, I can't really see any issue with it. It's not oversized or over tall or whatever, so I can support it.
I, I agree with Riary, and um, I, I, looking at the numbers, it's a very minimal request uh, to, uh, accommodate two cars, you know, who amongst us is not a two car family these days, right? And with winters and leaf pickup and whatnot, uh, it's hard enough to keep track of when you can and can't park on the street. Um, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
I wanna just make a point, cause I will also support it, but as we get, it seems like we're getting a lot of garage cases. And I wanna sort of be on the record is, I am persuaded not by the fact that it's a fairly small change in the, um, impervious surface coverage variation and all that, but the fact, as Bob has mentioned, we're trying to get cars and will met off the street. Uh, this is a strange street when you come up Catalpa, and it's fairly narrow, and I could see where, I'm not even sure where you can park. It's not as easy as a typical street, so I'm in favor of this because it does help the homeowner to get cars off the street. And that's what persuades me ultimately.
Yeah, me as well. I also look up and down the alley, everybody has two car garages, so. Uh, the neighbor also wrote a letter in support, so.
Thank you.
I can support it as well.
Support it as well.
So can I. Can we take a vote?
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, so this is a unanimous recommendation to the board, which will meet on July twenty seven. You may wanna be there, although they may just. I moved to, oh, go ahead, Maria.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number twenty twenty one Z twenty six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It was noted that Christine seconded the motion.
Take care.
Roberts, can we go to the next case?
Our next case is twenty twenty one Z thirty, four twenty eight Gregory Avenue. This is a request for a two hundred and seventy four point one one square foot total floor area variation and a three point six eight foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the replacement of an existing one story addition on the legal nonconforming structure.
Hi. Are you, are you Mr. Strauss?
Uh, I'm Mike, okay, he's, uh, I'm representing Mr. Strauss, the architect, and, uh, the architect can be here, Mr. Strauss can be here, so.
You need the name and all that?
We'll get, we'll get together.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you.
I guess the people we're trying to do is, of homeowners, um, they're not trying to add the additional square footage to what they already have there. Um, we don't intend in any way to change the existing footprint of the sunroom that he has there. Um, as much we're looking out for the homeowners, their, their current sunroom, I, I know you've said you've driven by and seen it yourselves, um, it's in bad shape, um, not just cosmetically, but it's, you know, like getting a lot of water into the roof, through all the blast pains. Um, these are all, uh, one unit attached, um, structure, so it's, um, pretty dangerous as well, um.
Did you know when this was built? The existence?
No, he didn't, he didn't tell me, we don't have.
Says the permit was nineteen eighty six, in the package.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that, um, so, you know, basically, we're just trying to help the homeowners feel more comfortable, feel more warm and more safe, not have water intrusion, um, and have a safer structure. We're not, again, we're not changing the property, we're not changing it at all, um, we're keeping the, the E walls, uh, base area walls, and we're beginning to see consolidation, I think it works. So we're just trying to restructure a bit, as we can.
Thank you. Any questions? For the applicant? No?
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, let's see, I saw.
Let's see if anybody else wants to comment.
If there's anyone else that wants to comment on this difficult case. I see no one, so please, please have a seat, and we will, thank you.
Lisa, are, are we still taking YouTube live comments or anything?
Um, we are not YouTube live tonight, so we are not, um, I'm not quite sure.
So if you wanna make a, i- if the public wants to make a comment, they have to be here in person from going forward?
At this point, yeah, um, but I am, wanna look into that for, once that gets up and running regularly, that, when we're live on YouTube.
Oh, yeah?
If I could ask, yeah.
So, uh, can we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move to recommend granting a request for a two hundred seventy four point one one square foot or four point six nine percent total floor area variation, and a three point six eight foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the replacement of an existing one story addition on the legal nonconforming structure at four twenty one, four twenty eight Gregory Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
I second.
This is to me the easiest case ever, um, so far, what I've seen, I mean, all they're doing is replacing what's there. Everybody else we've seen seems to wanna expand and go higher, go wider, and they're just putting back, they're using the same foundation, so to me, this is a no brainer.
And I'd say, uh, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they just wanted to repair it, they wouldn't need a zoning variance.
Yeah, pretty much, replacing windows or the roof, yeah.
They just repaired it, so essentially they're repairing it with a new structure. So I, I think this is great.
No other comments?
I got nothing but wise comments.
I'll be supporting.
Me too.
Yeah. I will too, so can we take a vote?
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this will go the positive recommendation to the Village Board on July twenty seven. Thank you.
Mike, can I get your signature before you run away? Thanks.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number twenty twenty one Z thirty.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, can we go to our next case?
Our next case is twenty twenty one Z thirty two, eight forty two Lyden Lane. This is a request for a two point five six foot front yard setback variation and a five point three five foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the construction of a one story attached garage addition on the legal nonconforming structure.
Are you Mr. Sermon? Good evening.
Nervous.
That's alright. Yes, please go ahead. Thank you. And any, any questions for the?
Yeah, the, the width of the, uh, current garage is what, do you know? The width of the existing garage? That's what it looked like.
So it's very, very small, I, I mean, even young person.
What we were talking about. We were talking about garage widths for a single car garage. This is like barely meeting, it seems, it's pretty tight.
Yes, current.
Yeah, the current.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, I assume no one else wishes to comment, so thank you very much, uh.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to ask one more question.
Alright.
Did you consider doing a one car garage as opposed to one and a half car?
No, it's gonna be one and a half, but it's already, existing garage is one car garage, but the addition is gonna be one and a half.
Yeah.
It's just five feet, exactly, like a half of a car.
Hmm.
So they can put the car.
Didier, are you suggesting perhaps a, a twelve foot width garage as opposed to a fifteen?
Well, twelve foot is an average size. It allows a car to get in there, open one of the doors and get out. The second door, you can kinda open, that's a standard size with a nine foot door. This is a sixteen foot garage with a ten foot door. So, you know, I, if it wasn't protruding in front of a line that goes all the way down Lake Street, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making an issue of that.
It just, it, it, uh, the one thing they're looking for, I think, is, uh, variance for the front yard setback. Well, actually, it's their side yard.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Um, and I believe it's thirty six feet currently, Lisa?
I think so. Yeah, thirty six is the required setback, um.
Which is, for Will Met, that's a higher setback, typically a setback is around thirty feet, correct? If you're kind of taking average?
Um, sure.
Yeah, so I, so right now, I guess my point is, going six feet is, is acceptable. It might not, but going twelve, it might be getting close to the, and not in. The way this, for the newer members, the way that thirty six is set up is they average all the houses within, I think, a block area. So they're saying the average between, is it a block long?
It is, um, sorry, that's the Lyden side, yes.
Hmm?
That, that's the Lyden side, yes.
Yeah. So that means.
Point was, if you look down.
Down Lake?
Down Lake, this would stick out where everything else is back.
Yeah.
So you've created this change, and I'm not sure I understand why we have that, but certainly we do have that, and we do have a, you know, zoning rule that says you're supposed to be back a certain distance. So what happens when someone says, I wanna bump out and ignore what looks like a consistent setback all the way down Lake Street?
Well, I, I thought about that, or noted that as well. I think that the difference here is that this house, it's their side yard, and the majority of the houses on Lake, it's a front yard. Um, I, it's not, aesthetically, it's, it's not, um, it doesn't excite me. Um, but I, I can understand the rationale for it, and I, I think if they were doing a two car garage, we'd have a real dilemma because, you know, that's what our, our, um, real goal is. On the other hand, it would extend even further into the.
Hmm.
Hmm.
You know, you said it's their side, it really is their front yard that they're extending into. Their front yard is really on Lake Street.
Uh, that's considered their side yard, their, their front yard is where their address is, correct?
Oh, but, but the front entrance is on Lake Street.
Front faces are like, just like all the other houses down. But that's how you establish the side yard is.
Okay.
Is by the address.
Understand that.
Now, thirty six feet, like I said, is, is deeper than most, most homes, especially if you go some down, some of the smaller streets, there's thirty feet, they could be twenty five feet. Uh, this just happens to be the average. But, uh, what Riary said basically was, their side yard, or all the other houses as you go east, it's their front yard. So they have a lot of space in the, in their backyard to do more things. So this has a lot to do with the way the code's interpreted and the small property.
And to point out that it's the average, there are some that will protrude further, others that less, so this is an average number of the setback. Right?
Yes.
So, uh, it's not that it's a, it's a, an absolute line that's drawn, uh, across, uh, in front of Lake Avenue.
I understand your com- your comment about sort of the symmetry or the, um, aesthetics, but it's a sm- and it's not a lot larger of a garage. It's, you know, five additional feet probably gives the homeowner a lot of extra space because, you know, if you just, he said surgery, he's got, you can see he's got a taped-up knee. You don't know if, you know, you need a walker and you need a little extra room, you don't have ten feet's enough room. What if you need a ramp in the future? I think this helps keep a homeowner in his, in his home, you know, for a longer length of time, so.
Thank you, if there are no more questions for you, please, please have a seat.
Sure.
Thank you. I think there are no other comments, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh, second. I move to recommend granting a request for a two point five six front.
Sorry, yeah.
Uh, two point five six front yard setback variation of five point three five side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story attached garage addition on a legal non-conforming structure at eight forty-two Leyden Lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Go ahead, Christine.
Christine will second.
Um, I can support it because, uh, a one-car garage, no matter what, is difficult to maneuver in. Uh, by the time you get any sort of lawnmower or snowblower or anything, really eats up the space, and I think it's a reasonable request to, to, uh, resolve the issue, so I can support it.
Yeah, I too can support it, I, I think it's a modest request. It's still just a one-car garage, so it's, um, you know, it's, but it gives additional space needed, so I can support it.
Yeah, I'd say to comments that have been made about the, you know, thirty-three, thirty-six front yard, we're really talking about the side yard number, which is fifteen feet, and they're proposing to take that to nine and a half feet. So that's the distance off of Lake Avenue. If you go down Lake Avenue, most of the house is front Lake Avenue, and they all maintain that line. Now, I understand the need for a single-car garage that is usable. It looks like the one they have is way undersized. However, I don't understand why it needs to be, you know, five feet bigger when, you know, making it two feet bigger brings it to above an average size, one-car garage. So I'd like to hear what other people say.
I think the side yard setback is more like thirty feet, 'cause you kinda, where do they, the, the setback is from the property line? Right, so it is only fourteen.
Side yard adjoining street setback. Am I reading it wrong, Lisa?
Nope, you're right, but, um, the right-of-way is particularly wide there, there's a lot of distance between the sidewalk and the property line.
Yeah.
I just, uh, for me, I think it's very interesting because I could swear that I saw a for-sale sign in front of this house. Um, and if that's the case, then what the homeowner needs to accommodate his, his ability or disability really comes into question for me. I don't know if anybody else saw the for-sale sign.
I didn't see that.
Can we ask them if the house is for sale?
Sure.
Is the house for sale currently?
Uh, no. They just moved, uh, two years ago and they're able to live in that thing.
Any other comments on this case?
Ryan Hart, can we suggest, and this is being, I, I, consistent with what, um, has been said, uh, that they make a more modest increase in the size of the garage?
If that is the consensus view of the board, we can raise that question, but maybe we should proceed and see how, how the rest of the board members feel.
I mean, I'm not sure that that's what Didier was saying, but I would support a more modest increase, 'cause I am concerned about what happens when Lake Street begins, you know, people find reasons to.
I, I, I'd like to comment on that. You drive down Lake Street at thirty-five miles an hour, and this, again, I emphasize, this is an average. I don't know, I haven't checked whether this is a straight line, whether all of them are fifteen feet from the property line. And I just don't know if this will, the additional three feet will make a difference visually and otherwise, uh, along that busy street. I, I just, uh, I just don't know, so I, I, my view is that, uh, to ask them to reduce it further, I have some issue with that, but if, if majority of the board feels that we should ask the applicant to reconsider, we can do that.
I guess the only concern I have with reducing it is there's a certain cost to construction, and, you know, if we're gonna say, well, you can't have, you know, reduce it by two feet, it's gonna cost the same amount, so it's almost, we shouldn't consider cost in our discussion. Um, we should, you know, focus on how it impacts the neighborhood. So, but I know if I was building it, I, five feet doesn't sound that unreasonable, I guess.
I, I would just add, in, in terms of the discussion of whether to scale it back by two or three feet, um, I believe my garage is no anomaly, but I have a two-car garage, and I'm constantly trying to squeeze by shovels and rakes hanging on the wall, bicycles squeezed in in front of our cars, um, the occasional golf cart that gets planted between the two cars. Um, it, it, uh, a two-car garage is a tight space, a one-car garage is a tight space. I, I don't think that they are asking for too much by asking for a one and a half car garage, and, um, I, I, e- even if there were a perfectly straight line of facades down Lake Street, I think this is a very small request for a basic need. Uh, and it is a hardship to not be able to open your car doors. It, it's hard enough at sixty, whatever I am, um, it, that only gets worse with age, right? So.
I guess after granting that two-car garage to every case is individual, of course, we look at it independently, but, um.
So do I, do it, I, I sense that there's not a, a dominant, uh, notion here to.
I would go on to say that, uh, after hearing the other board members speak, I am getting convinced now that a one and a half car garage and the extra three feet of push towards Lake Street is probably okay.
Um, in the same place where Didier's, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this case? If not, can we go to a vote, Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Nork?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a unanimous recommendation to the board of trustees that will meet on July twenty-seventh to consider the case. Thank you very much.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty twenty-one Z thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Can we have the next case, please?
Our next case is twenty twenty-one Z thirty-one, two nineteen Central Avenue. This is a request for a two hundred and eleven point zero seven square foot lot coverage variation and a two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight point zero four square foot total floor area variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition on the legal non-conforming structure.
Good evening, please, hello, state your name and address and. Oh, yeah, it works.
I think, I think that's okay.
Good evening. I, I think we've all been to the site. I, I, I took the liberty of walking around, uh, noticing that it's vacant, so I just walked around and trespassed probably and, but I appreciate the, uh, it was helpful to walk around.
It's a, it's a, it's an interesting house, I think is probably the best way to approach it. Uh, we're at a reason, we started looking at it, we were having meetings about what to do, 'cause they were from the city out. And I looked at it, the one picture here is when, when we first came out, what we saw, you know, you can't see the, you can see the back. There was, uh, there were two very large conifers, foundations planted within the first twenty feet, and a shed that are now permitted to be taken out. Uh, there were forty-five feet of wall, and the port cochere extended out by twenty feet, which is why you can't see the picture of the back facade, but you can now see more classical art and other items, uh, just, just as a, 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 um, and we looked at, we were looking at it and.
I know this is somewhere, but can I ask when this house was built?
I think it was nineteen twenty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
And we were sitting and talking, you know, given that there's been a lot of talk about garages tonight, it has a relatively about nineteen-feet clear two-car garage with columns and mills, so it was at a time where it was probably, cars, maybe, maybe they're not there, but the port cochere runs through the first floor. Probably the more interesting thing about this house is it doesn't have a basement, and the first floor has probably two very habitable rooms, one in the front and then room on the side. Then there's a little bit of storage room on the side that's filled up with, uh, I think every appliance that had been ever taken out of the kitchens is that were a model and moved down into what was the laundry room, there was an entrance, there's a depressed area, there's the, um, it has boilers and air handlers, and then two small rooms across the port cochere, which one was probably for a driver where they waited and a bathroom, and a little unheated storage room and a connector that there's a horse that can close on, but it's unheated, just, I think if you read the sales brochure that they had put a new floor in, but it was something for a car on. Uh, it's some interesting things, so it's somewhat of an upside-down house, which is most of the habitable space is the second floor. So if you're up there, and it's, there is an argument here, that is the only argument, that that's the habitable space, and there's not, there's not a spot for a normal car. Our design really only came about was to extend the extrusion of fairly classical formal house. It's not like it's a Victorian or some other type of things, where it steps in and out, and where we just take the same kinds of area and actually found matching direction. And it takes some of the rusticated format around and put it in and actually lower the ceiling height and add some of the same green clay tile from the main, not from the main, but in addition to that, to sort of secondary, uh, image. So that was, that was the design image, and it's about thirteen feet out, and the trees were probably eighteen.
Do you think they put it more the living on the second floor so they could get a better view of the lake before the trees were, were mature and gilson, maybe, or not really?
Get up on the roof, you can't see the lake.
No, you can't.
I think my house, all the houses in the east are taller and more.
Yeah, I'm just curious why they would have designed it that way.
I, I've known people living on upside-down, like, down in Low Country and, and, or Vacation Oregon, it's, it's, you know, it's, like, when you put it up and you put bedrooms on the first floor, for that very reason, because you can look out over the marsh.
Sure.
Catch warm wind, you know, wind does, you know, does, does a lot of good things. Probably a better, probably better for a second or third or whatever number houses is something laid out than a primary residence, where it's a little trickier.
Okay.
And that would be, that, that would be the extent of what you're discussing tonight. That, that, I don't think we could make a different argument, and most of the square footage on the first floor that's included is not necessarily, I would call it habitable space. And it's not your use of it other than, uh, secondary, uh, your decision to be, and probably during the time from what was built, there's been a couple of smaller additions that you picked up on, the dining room is extended, there was probably an L-shaped loger on the east side where the windows are in the front over in front of the dining room. This is more forensic than anything else, but that space was probably important, and it probably also wrapped, it was covered, so it still has square footage across where the dining room is, and it was probably just a square, a small woodwork, 'cause you can see the red door on the back, the roof, and a blaster on the air fasci.
Yeah, I'm curious, and I can't read the numbers on the dimensions of the space. The great room and the living room look pretty large, what is the size of those rooms?
So that, they are twenty feet wide by thirty feet long.
Yeah.
Big formal room from, in that period of time.
Right.
Not unusual, not uncommon, you know, those, in medical terms.
And the living room is above that, right?
Yes, those two, those are the two.
In the great room, you step down. Okay, all right, thank you. Now, we had just said, what are the dimensions of one point five of the existing garage?
The existing garage is nineteen feet long by twenty feet wide. So it's very tiny, too far.
And you say there's a column in the middle there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Oh. What's, there's just as a historical interest, was there ever, the, the port cochere, as you call it, was that ever used as a drive-through with a vehicle?
It'd be, it'd be tough, today's cars to drive through, like, if you were driving any kind of, anything that wasn't an automobile, that was an SUV or something like that, it'd be, it'd be hitting things.
But the, 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 the driveway from the, from the alley, that existed always, always, or was that rea- a recent addition?
We don't know that one.
Okay.
I think they drove through.
Oh, okay.
Of course, that port cochere could be modified to fit a normal car, couldn't it? I mean, the actual port cochere is, is wider, it's the driveway into it that's small.
It's, it is your kind of front door, so you'd be walking through the garage to get to that door on the side for anybody visiting from the front unless you were having them coming around the back or.
Okay.
I'm a little bit more of a walker, so I tend to think if I walked up, I'd be walking by, and seem somewhat awkward.
So that's the front door?
This is, this is more formal entrance here.
Any questions? This, so, so the, the addition that you're proposing is to, you're redoing the second floor, you're doing a lot of other things, but primarily to the, to the south, to add a master closet and master. but primarily to the, to the south, to add a master closet and master bathroom for the master bedroom on the second floor and then below, you're proposing to add another, another garage space, car space, is that correct? Now, what you are also doing, if I'm looking at the, at one point eight, uh, you, the exist, you're encroaching into existing garage space with that, that, uh, little cutout. What is, what is the space now, I can't read, what is that space with all that sort of closets thing, what is that?
Right now, it, it's just filled with old cabinets.
And what is it supposed to become?
And now it's laundry room.
Oh, that's going to be a laundry room?
Laundry and storage.
So the existing garage space would be even more, less usable for two cars as you're now planning to encroach on that space, right? At most you could get one car in and then one car in the new space, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Right, right, I got it.
What happens to the original garage, does that get bigger?
Gets smaller.
It's smaller?
Yes.
Just one, one.
If you look at one point eight, yeah.
It makes it more efficient.
You see one point eight where there's a little bit of blue and there's a notch?
Yeah.
That's encroaching on their existing garage.
What am I missing here that, right now, the garage is so tight and with the pillar in the middle, it's hard to use. So now you're gonna make it smaller. What am I missing?
Use two spaces, the other space is left, left for bicycles.
So it's not a three-car garage, it's a two-car garage with three doors?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the size then of the new, call it the new one-car garage?
Twenty-four, but with that, it's real thirty feet long, that's the width.
Right.
Because we looked at making it the side, you know, at the smaller side, it doesn't seem, in our opinion, in certain extent, that it feels like in our identity, it's like a giant bay or something, it's fitting with the rest of the structure. Nothing, nothing more than that, this is a formal response to it visually.
I have a question, did you look at, instead of expanding more space, was there any other way to configure it? My, my concern is, if you look on page two, the floor area that's maximum allowed is fifty-nine hundred. You were already at seven thousand six hundred, now you're at eighty-five hundred, so you're like twenty-five hundred square feet above the maximum floor area, so for us, it's difficult to, to, to grant a variance in that case. Sure.
Here's the, you know, we talked about, what do you think about this, go back and look at things. Said, well, I think you should make, you know, somewhat the argument of the war for the space, it's really, you know, the way we continue to look at the discussion that it was basement. Or was it something like, hey, we need this, like, it's a land grab type of thing. But looking at achieving some things, the back wall of the current garage is a decent grid. So you're somewhat bound in some ways where you're really building everything. So like you're just cutting out the area under a header, like the windows on the side going into the, in addition, we can rock down through the sill of windows. We do some of that work, we mix with new brackets, you know, that match.
Sure.
There's more of those things. The only reason that notch goes into the garage is it clears up the, the sweep back from the closet, wherever you take a part of the closet out. So that's where the hallway is, loop around, probably is where this is.
But could you have used the, you know, we're always asked to reduce the variances if we can, that's, the board has asked us to do that. So I look at the utility room, not on the new plan, but on the old plan, and that, um, I guess it's not deep enough for garage now that I look at it. Well, this, this is a, what is it, seventy-three hundred square foot building? I've gotta believe there's other ways to add a garage space and add a master bath, master bedroom with a suite. I mean, there's a lot of huge spaces on this and, you know, I'm an architect and I gotta believe that, you know, one could look at moving things around a little bit as opposed to just adding on to suit, um, the easiest way to do things.
You, you know, if I could say, DDA, related to that point, when I look at the existing plans, it appears to me that you have a very generous master bedroom that already has an attached bathroom and closet space, all of which look generous to me. Um, and my, my first thought when I reviewed this was, I, I couldn't understand why there was any need whatsoever for a second story on this. And I then came back to the port, port cochere, yes, um, and, and said, there's gotta be a way to get another car in here somehow, um, without adding on to what in my view looks and feels like a very bulky house. Yes, it's long, yes, it's, uh, on a generous lot, but it is massive.
I mean, could you fit the garage where the storage and exercise room is? Wouldn't that be a large garage? If you just change the, underneath the port cochere, the wall, I don't know, it's, it's, what we're, what I'm struggling with is just the square footage.
Yep.
You know, it, it sounds like a small request, but the request is, yeah.
Doesn't even sound like a small request.
No, it doesn't.
Fifteen, yeah, actually fifteen percent, yeah.
You may, the.
It's already there, you know, at somewhere.
And Lisa, you may want to point out that there are some things that are counted that are normally, like the attic, are penalized. But none of that would add up to the, to the, to the difference requested. Uh, the port cochere counts as, as, uh, billable ar- area as well as some in the attic, but all that amounts to roughly a hundred, two hundred and fifty square feet, which would not make a big dent into the variation request, right? Is that right?
That, yeah, that's kind of, um, how we've looked at other spaces, is kind of what's not getting a bonus and, you know, what, what are you taking a hit on with a, a second floor overhang or things like that, so yeah.
I think, I think what we're all, uh, dealing with here is, is the hardship issue. Is this something?
Hardship can really describe it as, your first floor is only a basement.
Well, even if it were a basement, it would count. I mean, is, is this, it's clearly nice to have, it, it makes the, the second floor master bedroom contemporary, but it's, it's a nice to have, what is the hardship? And I'm looking at, again, at, at item C and D on our variation standards and I just don't, uh, haven't heard yet a convincing argument that, uh, that it, that this thing would prevent the owner, that absent this, it would prevent the owner from making reasonable use of the property. That's the, the issue I have. Let's go, any other comments, question?
No, I agree with you.
Would you like to say?
I also come back to the fact that the house is already seventeen hundred square feet over what's allowed and they're asking to increase that fifty percent again.
Now, it's not an efficient plan, we all agree, it's not, if we had to redesign this thing and we clearly would do it differently. But we have what we have and, uh, uh, no, any other questions for the other? No, and would you like to make other comments? Good evening. Could I just take your name, please?
Kimberly, um, I'm a homeowner. I think the problem offered is the, the issue arose when we realized that the garage wasn't going to use full space and we couldn't park two cars in it. I think, well, we could, we can literally pull the cars in together, but we can't open the door and step out. Um, and I'm literally can't step out at all. And so we realized very quickly, in order to use the house, we were gonna have to build another garage. One, I don't think that we have two cars, so we didn't really do to have three. Um, and that's why, that's the reason we did the cutout, so three-car garage. And so it's kind of still off there, we thought if we have this garage, it would be nice to have, you know, the silverback and, and positive silver because we would essentially try to return the space above back to what it originally was. Um, the closet space that you see next to that master bedroom, that was all added on and it's, it's very awkward space. And we were just trying to put it back, um, you know, put it back to its original space that was.
I'm not sure if I understand where, just kind of the plan, you're saying the part above the garage?
Though, the, the, one point six.
The original master, um, master closet, they connect those two bedrooms, we can walk through it.
What, one point six shows the demolition of the existing.
Oh, I've seen.
That was sort of added on at a later date, I don't know who did that, but it's sort of awkward space. We're trying to put the house back together how we thought it was originally, how it originally laid out there. And, um, the only bathroom on that floor is the, that bathroom between the two bedrooms. So we were gonna put, um, make the master bathroom and upstairs powdering it.
The existing master bathroom.
Yeah, it's the master bathroom. Because it had to be, when we went to, um, inspection, nothing worked in there, it all had to be redone, nothing. I mean, it's, it's a lot of space, but a lot of space is really not usable. So I know it's square footage wise, it needs a lot and you'll give it a think, why isn't this working? It's because it sat for a long time, I know what you did, but, and some weird things were done, we're trying to undo those things.
You said there's one bathroom on that floor? Cause I see two.
Yes, two.
Two, there are two right now, but one is the master bath and one is the back that feeds to those two bedrooms. But the master bathroom, nothing worked there. We were thinking of turning that into a, a powdering for upstairs.
Any questions for the, I'm looking, seeing none.
I, I have one more question. Did you, um, consider at all how you could work within the footprint of the house to?
Oh, a hundred percent, yes, absolutely. Cause I don't, you know, I'm, I don't want to go knocking walls down or do attic. I didn't, I, when we started our house search, that was the last thing I wanted to do, was any kind of destruction. We've entered a war, we're getting older, and our grandchild living with us, I mean, that's like a full-time job in itself. So that's basically the last thing I wanted to do. It just didn't seem to work and that's one of the reasons I wanted to do this, but, because I, it was a wonderful house. So, I mean, I didn't want to, in order to make this work, I wouldn't have to go over the next staircase. There were weird things I didn't want to do in the house, um, and we were that much.
Because I, I'm an architect as well, when I look at it, it just seems like where the exercise room is, the storage and that bathroom, if you brought the, the west wall of the exercise room right across, that would be a very large parking space right there and you could still have storage too.
Well, this essentially is our back patio. There's a, there's an awning that comes over there, we use it with storage spaces, the window and then the port cochere wall.
Yeah.
There's a, there's an electric awning that goes over there.
Okay.
And that's sort of a patio, it could be that. Particularly, I mean, uh, yet wonderful space, we're recalling up the, uh, the challenge.
Okay, so no, no more questions, uh, thank you very much. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience, yes, there's someone that would like to speak on this application. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Cheryl Wheeler, I'm a homeowner, homeowner, excuse me, at two twenty-five Central Avenue. I submitted a letter in tribute of an architecture we completed. Um, and in the reading of the letter, I regretfully object to this, uh, repertory, it's a neighbor, it's not something that we take pleasure in by any means. But, um, as several of you have alluded to or explicitly stated tonight, this is already a massive structure that is over seventeen hundred square, beyond the current level for total floor area.
No, but which side is your, what, is that?
West.
She's west.
West, yes, we just built, um, a new single-family home.
That's under construction now, is that the one?
It, it is, yeah, it's fully framed, but it's dry-walled and et cetera. But certainly we rely on this information when we build ours. Um, if these variations were granted, um, I believe it would put them at forty-two percent above the current zoning ordinance limit for total floor area, which I believe would set a standard precedent for the neighborhood. Um, I won't belabor all of the points, um, I know everyone's time is precious, I won't go through everything that's already stated in the letter. I just wanna get a couple of high points, I think, um, that they do not meet the standards for approval for variations and I think that's pretty clear, um, based on, at least I'm no expert like you guys are, but on my review of the application and the floor plan, um, I think that, uh, there's one claimed hardship here, and it's the garage, and that's it. The master bedroom, all the discussion about the second-story master suite, that's not even a claimed hardship as far as I could tell when I reviewed the application. And so when you look at the claimed hardship with the garage, uh, they claim it's undersized. I know there's been a lot of discussion here about what's a normal average size of a garage and that you all support two-car garages. They have a two-car attached garage that I believe is, don't quote me on this, I think it's around twenty-one feet wide and a little over eighty feet deep. Whether that constitutes undersized or not, I'm not quite sure, I'm not the expert. It seems to me that it could fit two good-sized cars in there. Um, but certainly, um, their, their home is massive enough that there, it could be reworked in a way that could accommodate a few extra feet that we've heard denied as appropriate for a two-car garage. And we don't feel that adding another garage, which would essentially give them a three-car garage, um, is appropriate here and certainly in no circumstance with the second story, meet the standards for variation either. And my last point, um, is that the hardship here, we believe they put it on themselves, they created the hardship. They bought this home a few months ago, I believe, maybe at the end of last year, they knew the size of the garage, they chose this house. And so I would argue that they created the hardship themselves.
And does your backyard, how does your house align with their current house? It's probably, their house is probably beyond where your, the backside of your house is.
I believe their house is beyond ours, a portion of our house, and then the, cause we have the back and then the sunroom. The sunroom is, so many meters goes out into the, I can't read exactly the measurements. But our house needs the ordinance.
You didn't need a variance.
We didn't ask for a total floor area variance or anything like that. We relied on the ordinance when we built the house the way we did. And they're already well above the one as it stands now.
Okay.
Any questions for? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's anyone else to speak for or against this application.
But I think, don't they have an opportunity to speak again if they'd like?
Sure.
If you have any additional comments you'd like to make in response to her comments, you're welcome to.
Unfortunately, I didn't hear much of the comments, it was a party hearing.
Oh, okay.
But I do know that.
Could you say your name, please?
The beauty of this house is it's an old house, built in nineteen twenty-nine, reconfigured in an odd way. There are a lot of spaces where you say you can rip out the four pusher, put a car in there, then you're gonna put a driveway at the front.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying fill the four pusher, I was gonna say take the, the building that's furthest to the. Well, the, the part that was furthest to the east, that structure.
We went through a lot of all these durations, trying to keep the beauty of the house, the old structure of the house, and try to keep that so that when you add it on to it, it looks better from the back of the house. The back of the house had an old shed back there, a story high. Two big old pine trees, the whole bit looked terrible. The idea is to add on and make the back of the house look pleasant from the alley as a power, fit in with the rest of the house. The same material, same lines, but nice roof. As far as looking and view from the backyard, you can't see anything. There's so many trees in the backyard, you can't see the Bahai Temple. You can't see anything. Go out in the alley, you might be able to see it, look down the road. You can't see anything from the backyard. You can't. It's just the way it is. It's a beautiful house, we fell in love with it. We got a great architect to redesign it, move it around so that we could enjoy it. Cause the way it's built, that great room, it is a big great room, right? You can't do anything with it. You can't chop it in half and have two floors. There's no way. So it's, it's hard to adjust to what you got without ripping it apart and ruining the beauty of the whole thing. So what we got is a great architect who put together a great plan. And it looks beautiful. And when it's done, it will enhance the whole thing. It's a great, it's a great place.
Did we, did we catch your name, please, for the record? Your name?
Oh, Jim Van Norwood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've, can we? I think we, the testimony is all done, we're closing the testimony, can we have a motion?
Make a motion? Nobody else wants to?
I can, if you want to. I'll move to recommend granting a request for a two hundred and eleven point zero seven square foot or one point two four percent lot coverage variation and a twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight point zero four square foot or fifteen point zero seven percent total floor area variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition on the legal non-conforming structure at two nineteen Central Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second, anybody?
Paul's second.
Okay. Mr. Pellet.
Well, I, I am sympathetic to the fact that it will improve the, the appearance of the house tremendously. The, the glass block on the rear facade is just, it's not appropriate to the house. It's just plain and ugly. And that this whole, what's proposed would make the house work better. I think that the hardship is, while they knew what the, the design of the existing house was when they bought it, the hardship is the design and the layout of the existing house. All of that said, you know, it's already well over the, what's allowed. I'm guessing that the, the zoning ordinance that determined what was allowed was, came after this house was built. And adding another, you know, twelve hundred square feet, plus or minus a few, to the house does seem a little stretched. But there is no basement. So they're gonna have all of their storage on that first floor. And so the garage going across the back makes some sense to me. And I think that the, the rest of it is an opportunity that they're taking advantage of. And, you know, I, I would do the same thing if I was in their position. Could they carve out another garage space somewhere? Yeah. I think it would be a lot more complicated. I'm really curious, I was so intrigued by the design of this house that I actually showed my son, who's interested in architecture, because it is just illogical to my current day eyes. It may have been very logical when the architect built it originally. I can't speak to that. But it is intriguing. And while I have problems with the, the fact that we're being asked to give a variance for additional space, like I said, I am sympathetic to the fact that it would improve it aesthetically and improve it functionally. And that working within the design of that house is gonna be difficult. So I, I'm, I'm not, you know, really ready to, to vote one way or another. But I'm interested to hear what other people have to say.
Yes, I have a difficulty with just the square footage overall, to be over so much, and then they ask for even more. You know, fifteen percent is a lot. And even on a small home, we would question, you know, a home that was only fifteen hundred square feet or two thousand, we'd question that amount. So I just have difficulty with that. I mean, a home like this, maybe they have to re, you know, create a new structure and get two large garages in the existing space possibly, and move some walls. I appreciate the design, I think the design was nicely done. You know, and it fits, the character is very nice. But again, it just, it's a lot of square footage. And that's what I'm struggling with right now. Again, I'd like to hear from the other colleagues, see what they have to say.
I'll be glad to jump in. I'm, I'm tempted by the design. It is gorgeous, I think the house will be gorgeous when it's done. But the garage is, right now, not really a hardship. Yes, it's tight, but you can get a car into and out of the garage. We're also looking at a second story on top of the garage. And that just adds to the square footage that we're using for the calculation. And there's no hardship identified for, to, to support that second story. I think, I'd be persuaded if it was a modest increase in the garage. We've seen tonight, people make very modest increases in their garages. If in fact, that's the hardship, and I've been convinced this evening that yes, it can be a hardship to be so tight you can't even open the doors. So I'm leaning towards not voting in favor of the requested application just because I think it does ask for too much.
I, I agree with Brad. And just to respond to a point that Ryrie made about improving the aesthetics and the appearance, those are not standards of review, they're, they're not a basis for our decisions. As we said earlier this evening, the fact that a hardship exists is probably one of the key things we focus on in every application that we review. And yes, we don't wanna change the character of the neighborhood or limit light and air to neighbors, et cetera. But the hardship is the crux of the argument. And I'm not persuaded that the existing space has not, has been thoroughly examined for how to accommodate another vehicle or bicycles, if that's what it is. A second point that I would make is that we have heard some very modest proposals for garages this evening. And this is an addition that is twelve and a half feet by twenty-nine feet. Large, if it were only a single story, but they're suggesting a second story as well. I'm not an architect, so I don't know how that looks if you just jut out on one level. But this request seems excessive, given that the house is already exceeding its floor area ratio by ten percent. So I will not be supporting this.
Yeah, I would add about the garage size, twenty-one feet wide is not small. Mine is smaller, and I'd be able to get two cars in it. One we just granted approval for in the alley was twenty feet wide.
Right.
I don't, I'm not convinced that the existing garage is, is a hardship. I can see, you know, the need to create more space, and you could do that interior to the building for bicycles and such things. But I just don't see that as a burden. And I also feel that the master bedroom can be designed to have a master suite with some shifting of things around. I agree that, I don't believe, you know, they've looked at all the different ideas of how to get what they're looking for. So I will not be supporting this.
I too agree, and won't be supporting this as well. You know, there is a two car garage, and I, I'm not convinced that it's not usable as is. Maybe it just wasn't presented in a way that made me convinced that you couldn't fit two cars in there. And the, yeah, the requested overage in terms of the FAR is significant.
I walked around this house, this is, and looked at the floor plan. This is clearly an unusual layout. It looks impressive from the outside, but it's, the functionality of it is, is, is a little bit of a struggle. I can understand that. The question is, though, whether the functionality is compromised as it exists now to the extent that it is a hardship. And I read again from the ordinance, that it would prevent the owner from making, the current layout, the current use, the current design, prevents the owner, would prevent the owner from making reasonable use of the property. And, you know, I, I'm trying to find a reason for, for, or an argument for the owner's request here, but it just, I can't find one. And, and so with, with, very reluctantly, I, I would have to, I would have to, I cannot support this. So any other comments?
Well, I would say that, you know, if we're comparing it with other garages that we've been looking at or discussing, I don't know that any of them have a, a column in the center of the space, which does make it a little more difficult to navigate. But could they add to the size of it on, on one side, which is essentially what they're doing, but on a much smaller scale, and achieve the, or resolve the parking? And yeah, probably. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, before, before we vote, I was curious, Lisa, can the, should the petitioner, would the petitioner want to reconsider or go back to the drawing board? Cause I mean, you're hearing, you're hearing the way the vote's gonna go. So, just so you understand.
And you might wanna explain what the advantage of that would be.
I was just gonna say the impact, if, if you did get a negative, negative recommendation from us and the village board, I mean, you have the chance of going to the village board, but you have to get, instead of four affirmative votes, I believe you have to have a fifth one, if based on what I'm hearing here, where if you wanted to continue it, you could continue it and come back with a modified plan. That's not saying we would accept it. But if you go ahead now, then you have to wait a year before you can come back for another variance request. Does that make sense?
Lisa, can you clarify anything?
Sure, yeah. So, so you can, sort of two choices, if you wanna continue and ask the board to vote tonight, you can do that. Or you can ask them to continue to another date, if you think there's something that you can change, that you wanna come back and present something else to them. If you do proceed to, well, if you do proceed tonight and you get a negative recommendation, as Bob said, excuse me, you go to the village board, they have to approve all requests, whether there's a negative or a positive recommendation. But with a negative recommendation from the ZBA, you need five out of the seven trustees to support it. What, what the village board tends to do is they wanna work with you. And so if, if you still wanna proceed with the vote tonight, you could still be prepared for them to say, is there something else? The village board, something else that you could do that you would wanna look at. It's possible you could go to the village board and then say, you know what? We have thought about it, we've had an idea, we'd like to be sent back to the zoning board. Everybody wants you to get a positive recommendation for whatever it is, so that you're able to get something that everybody can agree to. If, if, if you get, if you get, if you get denied at the village board, that's when you have to wait a year to come back with the same request. You could always come back with a request that's different enough. But the same request has to wait a year. We just wanna make sure you knew all your options.
You'd be happy, you can discuss it amongst yourselves if you.
I'm gonna ask her a question. She thought I was gonna say son.
So, so until when, we have to set a date, right?
Right, we, we would want to continue it to a specific date so that you don't have to.
How much time would you want?
We've got, we've got a meeting coming up on the twenty-first of July, but I would need stuff like in a week, so that's probably too soon. We've got a meeting on August fourth. And then September first. That works for us, if that works for you, if you're not ready at that point, we can always.
And when do they need to get the information to you by?
If we could, that report will be prepared for the board the week before, so like by the twenty-eighth of July. I guess it depends on the extent of what your changes are. But certainly new, new drawings and, and maybe perhaps a new updated letter.
Am, am I correct in assuming that any changes that they make at all are gonna require variance since they're already over?
Right, yeah.
Existing building is already over?
Assuming that they're adding up.
No.
Yeah, I don't think there would be any, anything, yeah, there's no setback issues. Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, we could talk about specifics, but if it's all within interior.
If it's within the existing envelope. I would take it, it would be.
The only thing might be if you've got a window change on the west side, but we can do that administratively.
So you can, whatever, my sense is if we continue this to August fourth, whatever you do, if you request, there, there is a variation request, unless you do not make any changes to the envelope, is that correct? So if, if that's not feasible, is there, I don't see a reason why you'd want to continue, but it's up to you. So if that's not feasible, is there, I don't see a reason why you'd want to continue, but it's up to you. The other option is, and the board of trustee, the trustees have been, you know, they may be more sympathetic to your situation than we are, and so you may wanna take your chances with them. If they say no, you can still come back with a different proposal, substantially different proposal.
I hope they're not more sympathetic. They're just having more flexibility.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Pelton is saying, that we tend to be more, we interpret the code as we're supposed to, more strictly than maybe, as Mr. Pelton says, the board may be more flexible in looking at the criteria. So, again, would you still want to continue, or do you wanna take, go to the board on July twenty-seventh with a negative recommendation from us? With a different design, yes.
No, July twenty-seventh.
July twenty-second.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you proceeded tonight, it would go to the board on the twenty-seventh, and you could present to them this proposal. I, I think if there was a possibility that something smaller would be acceptable, I think they would try to work with you. They wouldn't, they're not playing gotcha, and trying to deny your request and make you do something. If you came back and said, we have, ended the dialogue with them, that you have another plan, they would be more than happy to send you back to the zoning board with this revised plan, whatever it may be.
But they would have to present that plan at the, at the meeting, or not?
I don't think so, because the village board isn't gonna be inclined to assess a new plan. They're just gonna wanna procedurally send these folks back to you all, for you to vet the revised plan.
I think what she was asking about, though, is if they go to the village and the village rejects it, when is the soonest that they could come back with a revised plan? Is that, is that correct?
That would just be whatever our schedule is. You'd kind of go back to the end of the line or whenever we could get you in.
If you went to the village board, you would not be putting a hold on August fourth.
Correct, yeah, 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 yeah. And you would, I mean, it's kind of like starting over and that you'd have to redo notice with whatever, you know, personal notice that was done, just because we wouldn't know what the date is now and what the request would be.
Okay, so we need to have a motion to continue?
I'll move to continue to August, Lisa?
Fourth.
Fourth, the August fourth meeting. Case number twenty-two-one Z thirty-one.
I'll second it.
We need to take a vote on this?
I think we could do all in favor.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, this case is continued to August fourth. Thank you very much.
Lisa, that's the only meeting in August, right?
Correct.
Yeah. We have one more item on the agenda?
So...
Our meeting.
The move to recommend approval of harm, of the zoning board of appeals minutes from July, I'm sorry, June second, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
We need to take a vote, or can we take...
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
I need to go through the adjournment. Is there anyone else that wants to say anything, seeing none? I can declare the adjourn.
Yep.
Thank you. We can turn off, we can turn off the microphone.